Good morning and welcome to the regular Board of County Commissioners meeting. Today is Tuesday, January 14th, and we do begin each of our meetings with an invocation. This morning, we have Pastor Paul Aragon from Restoration Church. We invite you to stand and join us.
Good morning, everyone. Would you join me as we pray? Lord, I want to thank you for this team of commissioners that seated in the county staff that are with them today. As they come into this new year and assimilate newly elected officials, Lord, I pray that you would help them to come together, that in these next weeks and months, there would be trust that would be built amongst them, that there would be a sense of partnership. Lord, I pray that you would join them at the table today as they enter into discussion, that there would be a spirit of unity and cooper- cooperation even amongst the diversity in which they share. Lord, I pray over the agenda that they're about to tackle, that you would help them, Father God, to make the best decisions that are in the best entrance of their constituents, Lord God, and at the end of the day, their decisions would be pleasing to you. Lord, I pray for the road ahead, that you would favor each and every one of them with just amazing health this year, that they would be able to do the people's business because their bodies are working right, that their minds are clear, Father, that they have been strengthened for a time such as this to lead us, Lord, and to help our various constituency here in El Paso County. So, Father, we thank you for our chairman, Ms. Carey, and pray that you would help her to guide the discussion today. And again, Lord, we commit him to you and pray that you'd bless him in the strong name of your son, Jesus. Amen and amen.
And if I could ask Clerk Schleicher to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three.
Item number three is staff emergency items, and I'm unaware of any staff emergency items today.
Item four.
Item number four is changes, postponements, and notice of the next meeting. I'm unaware of any changes or postponements to today's agenda, and the next meeting will be January 21st at nine o'clock AM.
Item five.
Item number five is a resolution to appoint the Chair and Vice Chair of the Board of County Commissioners of El Paso County, Colorado, Kenneth Hodges, County Attorney.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, Kenny Hodges, County Attorney. As you are aware, every, every year on the second Tuesday of January, there's a series of organizational resolutions that the Board considers. That's what's up today in the form of items five through 10. With the Chair's permission, I'd like to just remain up here. I know that Brett Waters' name is on several of those and introduce those items, and staff can answer questions as needed.
That sounds like a great plan. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. So, moving on to item five, that's the resolution setting Board leadership in the form of the Chair and Vice Chair. There's a resolution with blank lines for those two. Please let me know if I can answer any questions on the process of nomination and election from here.
Thank you. Okay, with that, Commissioner Bremer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to move approval of item number five, appointing Carrie Geitner Chair and Holly Williams, Vice Chair.
Okay, that has been moved. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Commissioner Weisong, for that second. So, that's been moved and seconded. I will just ask if there is, are any comments before we take a vote? Seeing none, we'll start down here with Commissioner Bremer.
Aye.
Commissioner Weisong.
Aye.
Commissioner Applegate.
Aye.
And Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye, that passes five zero. Congratulations, an event, uneventful first vote of this first Board. Okay, we will, now what we're actually going to do is just take a brief recess because we're going to reset the nameplates and do the, just the, the housekeeping here for just a moment, so brief recess. Call this meeting back to order, and we'll move to item six.
Item number six is the resolution to reaffirm the legislative and parliamentary rules and procedures of the Board of County Commissioners of El Paso County, Colorado, Kenneth Hodges, County Attorney.
Thank you. As described by the clerk to the Board, this re, this resolution would reaffirm our existing parliamentary rules, only changes in the form of blank lines to insert the Chair and Vice Chair that you just decided, and congratulations, by the way.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion on item six?
I move approval of item six.
Second.
Okay, that has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Bremer.
Aye.
Commissioner Weisong.
Aye.
Commissioner Applegate.
Aye.
Vice Chair Williams.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye, that passes five zero. Item eight.
Seven.
At sev, oh, excuse me, item seven, thank you.
Item number seven is the resolution to establish the organizational structure of the county's governmental offices, Brett Waters, County Administrator, and Kenneth Hodges, County Attorney.
Commissioners, before you, is a resolution that approves the county administrative organizational structure, describes your appointees, myself and Mr. Waters, and county-supported entities as well. This is largely unchanged from last year's organizational structure.
Okay, is there a motion to approve item seven?
I move to approve item seven.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Bremer.
Aye.
Getting this order after a year of doing it the other way is a little tough here. Commissioner Weisong.
Aye.
Commissioner Applegate.
Aye.
Vice Chair Williams.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye, that passes five zero, and now we are on to item eight.
Item number eight is the resolution to modify the 2025 County Commissioner Liaison responsibilities, Brett Waters, County Administrator, and Kenneth Hodges, County Attorney.
And Commissioners, before you hear is a resolution that would set the Commissioner Liaison responsibilities to ensure that the county is well represented throughout the community.
Okay, is there a motion?
I would move approval of the 2025 County Commissioner Liaison responsibilities.
A second.
Okay, that has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I will call the roll. Commissioner Bremer.
Aye.
Commissioner Weisong.
Aye.
Commissioner Applegate.
Aye.
Vice Chair Williams.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye, that passes five zero. Item nine.
Item number nine is the resolution finding sufficiency of crime insurance policy coverage for elected and county officials, Kenneth Hodges, County Attorney.
And Commissioners, as far as crime insurance resolution is concerned, statute requires that elected officials post a bond to protect the public. As an alternative, the, the county is able to purchase a crime insurance policy. The Board's role in that is to inquire as to the sufficiency of that policy. That policy is in your backup material, materials, and my legal opinion is that it is sufficient and meets statutory requirements.
Thank you. Is there a motion on item nine?
Well, this one is always a relief to me to be able to move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Commissioner Bremer.
Aye.
Commissioner Weisong.
Aye.
Commissioner Applegate.
Aye.
Vice Chair Williams.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye, that passes five zero. Item ten.
Item number ten is the resolution to reaffirm the posting location for public meetings of the Board of County Commissioners and the County Clerk and Recorder as the custodian of the minutes, Jackie Alredt, Clerk to the Board Manager, and Kenneth Hodges, County Attorney.
And Commissioners, this is our final resolution for our set of organizational resolutions today. This reaffirms our open meetings law required public posting space as the county website for our meetings.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution 10 to reaffirm posting of public meetings for the County Commissioners and the Clerk and Recorder's Office for custodial minutes.
And is there a second?
A second, item ten.
Okay, thank you for moving and seconding that item. I will ask if there's any discussion? And hearing none, I will call the roll. Commissioner Bremer.
Aye.
Commissioner Weisong.
Aye.
Commissioner Applegate.
Aye.
Vice Chair Williams.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye, that passes five zero.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you so much to our County Attorney. Item 11.
Item number 11 is the consent calendar, including items 11A through 11L3.
Okay, is there anyone here who wishes to speak on an item that is on the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it up here. Is there a motion?
I would move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
That has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, I will call the roll. Commissioner Bremer.
Aye.
Commissioner Weisong.
Aye.
Commissioner Applegate.
Aye.
Vice Chair Williams.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye, that passes five zero. Item 12.
Item number 12 is a proclamation recognizing Martin Luther King Jr. Day, Bill Weisong, Commissioner, Board of County Commissioners.
Commissioner Weisong.
Proclamation recognizing Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Whereas the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was born on January 15th, 1929, and dedicated his life to promoting peace, freedom, equality, and justice for all through nonviolent means, and challenged all of us to participate in the never-ending work of building and sustaining the beloved community. And whereas, Dr. King's teachings continue to guide and inspire us in addressing challenges and opportunities that arise in our diverse world. And whereas, Martin Luther King Jr. Day, a federal holiday following on the third Monday of every January, celebrates King's birth, honors his life and legacy, and raises awareness of the ongoing need to advance civil and human rights as enacted as a federal holiday in 1983, becoming the first federal holiday honoring an African-American end. Whereas, on August 28th, 1963, the Reverend Dr. King delivered a historic speech at the Lincoln Memorial, which called for an end to racism in the United States, saying, "Let us not wallow in the valley of despair, I say to you today, my friends. And even so, though we face the difficulties of today and tomorrow, I still have a dream. It is a dream deeply rooted in the American dream. I have a dream that one day this nation will rise up and live out the true meaning of its creed. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal." And whereas, the Reverend Dr. King proclaimed, "I have a dream that my four little children will one day live in a nation where they will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character." And whereas, the Reverend Dr. King also said in this historic address, "And this will be the day, this will be the day when all of God's children will be able to sing with a new meaning. My country, tis of thee; sweet land of liberty, of thee I sing. From every mountainside, let freedom ring." Whereas, El Paso County proudly recognizes the spirit determination and achievements of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of El Paso County, Colorado, hereby recognize January 20th, 2025, as Martin Luther King Jr. Day, to honor the accomplishments and sacrifices of those who worked to ensure equality, dignity, and opportunity for all. Done this 14th day of January, 2025, at Colorado Springs, Colorado, signed by the Board of County Commissioners of El Paso County, Colorado.
Second.
Okay, that has been moved and seconded, and I know we have some special guests here today, so invite you to come on down, and we would love to hear from you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, El Paso County Commissioners, and those of you in attendance. My name is Minister Earl Schaefer, Jr., where I'm Associate Minister and Minister of Music at Journey Bible-Based Church. I'm also the Vice President of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Legacy Preservation Society. I want to thank you all for this proclamation and what it represents and what it, how it supports the work that we're doing in Greater Colorado Springs and El Paso County. I have a few brief remarks prepared for your hearing. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day reminds us of the enduring power of his vision for freedom, justice, and for democracy. This year's theme, Mission Possible: Protecting Freedom, Justice, and Democracy in the Spirit of Nonviolence 365. It challenges us to embrace Dr. King's unwavering commitment to nonviolence as a daily practice, not just as a momentary action. It reminds us that the pursuit of justice and the pursuit of equality and equity requires courage, persistence, and unity, and that these ideals are achievable when we choose peace and compassion as our guiding principles. Let us honor his legacy by making the mission of nonviolence and justice possible every single day. Nonviolence does not mean non-disagreements. There will be times where even you all as county commissioners will disagree on things. There will be times where you in the audience today will disagree and have different points of view, but that doesn't mean that you resort to violence. Colorado is an open carry state, and we love our weapons here, but that does not mean that if I don't like something that you say, I go and pull my weapon, or I do something to physically or financially harm you or those you love. This year's theme, in the spirit of 365 Days of Nonviolence, challenges us to make peace and compassion not just a moment, but a movement. If we pay attention to what's going on in the world today in the spirit of our national elections, there are notes of uprising, and there are notes of violence, and there are notes of insurgency, and there are notes of insurrection that happen when people tend to disagree. Regardless of where you fall on the spectrum, ladies and gentlemen, it is important to be reminded that violence is never the answer. Nonviolence is not passive. It requires action. Service to our community is one of the most impactful ways that we can live out this commitment, whether through mentoring youth, feeding the hungry, advocating for justice. Every act of service is something that brings us closer to executing Dr. King's vision and bringing us closer to a dream realized. And at this time, I want to take a moment and invite every single one of you to join us on Dr. King Day, January 20th, 2025. We will be at the Antlers Hotel for our All Peoples Breakfast. Everyone is welcome to attend this event. We will have Isaac Newton Ferris, Jr., who is the nephew of Dr. King, serving as our keynote speaker, and we will have him throughout the entire week, where he will be speaking at our local elementary schools. He'll be speaking at UCCS, and he'll be speaking at CSU Pueblo as well, to engage our young adults and our senior adults alike. Thank you very much for the opportunity to come before you and deliver this message, and thank you very much for this proclamation, as it affirms your commitment to Greater El Paso County and Greater Colorado Springs to support keeping the mission of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. alive. Thank you.
And I'm, I'm just going to remind you, though, though I know that we are all very excited about this proclamation, we do have rules of decorum in this room, and we try not to, not to clap and applaud, and that's for consistency, so I appreciate that we're all excited, but I would appreciate us holding our applause on that. I know it's hard. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on this? I know there are many of you.
My name is Shirley Martinez, and I'm actually the president of the MLK Legacy Preservation Society. It is a new organization that is made up of volunteers from all over the county. It is a new 501(c)(3). It used to house itself over at CC, Colorado College, and what we found was that we had to have more commitment from the people of the community. So, it was formed, and we met with some of Martin Luther King Jr.'s family to talk about bringing someone here to be a voice for us, not just about the nonviolence of 365, but that 365 means that there's actionable items that we do every day, that it continues on, that it's not just one day. And the reason for bringing Isaac here to speak to students is the littles love him. We brought him here five years ago, and we brought him to charter schools, elementary schools, high schools, and he was somebody that the kids could reach out and touch and talk to about Martin Luther King as a person. What did he like to eat? What did he like to play? Like he liked to play stickball? The kids could ask just simple questions, which made him, in the lessons that they learned about Martin Luther King and all that he did, made him more personable for them. And that's what we want to bring back to our city and our county, is that, as we had stated before, this isn't about us disagreeing on things, it's about us coming together and really working together, 365. We can, you know, sit and not agree on a lot of stuff. I don't even agree on half the stuff my husband does, because he likes gunsmoke and I don't. But it's about being able to have those conversations, and then when we walk away, we go have a cup of coffee, or our kids can play together on the playground, or we can do things in school districts and in community activities together, no matter what our opinions are or what our values are, that we can still come together and work together. So, that's what our group is doing, and that's why we're bringing Isaac. He will be here all week. There is a caveat, we were going to do a unity march. We've done one every year, except last year, because it was negative 10. We will not be doing it again this year, except inside the hotel, antlers, it will be negative 12. So, we are thinking about our community and our people and adjusting. So, please, if you would like to come hear Isaac and hear your community, please come, it's free to the public. Everything that we're doing the week is free to the public. Bring your kids, they love hearing Isaac. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gold.
Good morning, Commissioners. I stand before you today as the president and CEO of the Colorado Springs Black Chamber of Commerce, and I just want to say congratulations to everyone. I think everyone is celebrating something. I think everyone is celebrating something in one way or the another, just as we're celebrating Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King today. I would like to say that during celebration, the best way that we can celebrate someone is to honor their legacy by continuing the work. And as we look to continue the work of Dr. Martin Luther King, his "I Have a Dream" speech is often referenced, and it is a beautiful speech that is centered in integration. A part of his lessons that is untalked about or unspoken, words are hard this morning, is economic empowerment for all. And I'd like to read a quote from his 1964 Nobel Peace Prize address. "There is nothing new about poverty. What is new, however, is that we have the resources to get rid of it." As we celebrate Dr. Martin Luther King today and all days, I hope that it is the goal from every person, from elected officials to essential workers, to be active participants in the pursuit of economic empowerment, not just for ourselves, but for everyone. And as I think about the landscape of Colorado Springs and El Paso County, I think about our most vulnerable populations being our military and veteran-connected community, our aging population, our Black Indigenous people of color, our LGBTQIA2+ population, and those with disabilities, just to name a few vulnerable populations that need protection and need economic empowerment and empowerment in many forms. So thank you for the work that you do to ensure that voices are heard and that actionable steps are made so that we can continue the work of Dr. Martin Luther King. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who is here to speak on this?
Good morning. My name is Sharon McDonald Tunsen. I am here representing Reverend Charles Timothy Wright, the pastor of Payne Chapel African Methodist Episcopal Church, the oldest African-American congregation in Colorado Springs. Our original building is still standing down at the corner of Castillo and Pueblo Avenue, and our church motto is "God, our Father; Christ, our Redeemer; Man, our Brother." And in that spirit, we thank you again for this resolution honoring the proclamation honoring Dr. Martin Luther King, and we just want to stay on the forefront here in Colorado Springs of bringing this community together every chance we get. And Payne Chapel has always been that kind of church community that offers a hand to everyone, a handout, and a hand up in this community. So we thank you again for your proclamation.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this? Okay, with that, I'm going to bring this up to the Commissioners. It's a tradition here that we have the sponsors speak last with their comments, and so I will ask if there are other Commissioners who have comments. Vice Chair Williams.
Yes, so this morning I had the opportunity to review some history about Martin Luther King. A few years ago, we were able to go to DC. I worked in DC in 1986, so I had pretty much seen every single monument in DC that has to offer, except for the Martin Luther King Memorial, and that is just such an amazing sight and so inspirational to see the stone rolling forth and to read his quotes. I was struck by, in reading about Martin Luther King, how he was a sensitive young man as a child. If his sister or brother got in trouble, he would frequently try to take the blame. And so I think that that just shows a level of compassion that we all need to show to each other. I want to stress the importance today of just even the concept of having a dream. You know, we live in a country where we can all have a dream, and we can pursue those dreams. There may be times when people will tell us, "No, you cannot pursue that dream." So I think that that's really important that we stress with our children, our family members, everyone we know, that you have the opportunity to pursue a dream. You can go to the college of your choice. You can choose. We have school choice in Colorado, which we are so fortunate to have because my granddaughter in New Mexico does not have that opportunity. So we have school choice where you can go and your tax dollars follow you as opposed to having to go to a private school. And we all have the dreams, like, for example, again, I'll use my granddaughter. She has a dream to make the right choices when she wants to, and she can lose her temper. She's just still eight years old. And she can make the right choices when she needs to. And so I just have a dream that the children of today can grow up and have the same opportunities I've had in my life and have the same equal opportunities that we're still struggling to achieve for everyone, even after we had the Voting Rights Act of 1965. All of the legislation that Martin Luther King Jr. inspired, one of the things I noted in his speech was that he had traveled to New York, and Black men in New York didn't feel that when they voted that it made a difference. Well, we're going to hear from Clerk Schleicher today about how three votes made a difference in an election. And so I would, you know, I would just like to remind everybody to have a dream that your vote does matter. And you never know when you will be the one, two, or third vote that wins or loses an election. So just take in your heart that you can pursue your dreams and remember those dreams and encourage your family members, your kids, your friends to follow their dreams and to pursue those, because I think that's very important. Thank you.
Other additional comments? Commissioner Bremer?
Sure, I'll jump right in here. You know, first of all, thank you to those of you who took the time to be here today. Dr. King inspired an entire generation to do exactly that, to just show up and peaceably do so. And that, I just want to recognize that your being here today is, it's walking the walk. And I so appreciate it because it's also communicating to our entire community how important that is. I do want to say something about the program, and Ms. Martinez, I love the approach of making tangible a legacy and ensuring that our kids do not forget. That it's not just, in some cases, some districts, it's a holiday from school, and other days, in others, it's not. And I've noticed a trend in those days. If it's not a holiday from school for the kids, they're utilizing that time to make sure that that is, that the kids understand what that's about. My child has been in a school where it is a holiday, and as a working mom, I always need to fill school holidays where potentially I'm still working with activities. And so I've ensured that he has something to read about Dr. King or find a History Channel show. And I would just encourage those of you who do end up with a holiday or an interaction with a young person to use that opportunity to teach him a little bit. And it could be as simple as, what sports did he like to play? How many siblings did he have? And where is his house? And I'm actually originally from Georgia, so we can walk a couple blocks down from the Marta in downtown Atlanta, and I could take him through that house one day when he's ready to really fully understand and embrace that. So I think just taking every opportunity to talk about the changes that Dr. King was able to make, really in our entire American society, is just amazing. I want to also thank Ms. Gold for really making, pointing out kind of the public policy implications that really kind of localize it to this board, right, about economic empowerment. What can we do to ensure that with every decision we make up here that our community members have the equal ability to live, work, and play as they see fit? So I just appreciated those words and that particular excerpt that I had never, never heard from that speech. Thank you for being here today, for taking the time, and just grateful to vote for this. And thank you, Commissioner Wyssong, for reading that for us.
Okay, I just have a few additional comments. My colleagues have said it well. Those who are here to speak on this from the public have all done such a great job of explaining the importance of this. But I just want to share my favorite quote. I can never do this proclamation or go through this day without thinking about a dear friend who has left us that headed up the Southern Christian Leadership Conference for a very long time, Henry Allen Jr. He is well missed. But in his office, there was a beautiful mural that had this quote, and it is one of my favorites. "Darkness cannot drive out darkness. Only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate. Only love can do that." And I love that quote because it is such a reminder of how important it is that we fight injustice when we see it and when it is amongst us, but we do it in a way that is both nonviolent and that we do it by loving each other and loving each other more than we let people divide us. And I really appreciate the comments on disagreement and conflict because you're absolutely right, and I would agree. My husband and I do not agree on everything, especially when it comes to television shows, for sure. So he likes all the war movies. I have two sons. I really don't care for a lot of that. But when we really think about it, there are a lot of disagreements. And truly, we learn and we grow and we stretch by hearing those other opinions. So we can't be afraid to have disagreements and have different viewpoints. It's very important to do that. And we need to remember at the end of the day to have that cup of coffee, take that walk, try to find some commonality because we are all children of God, and we are all made in His image. And that will always be stronger. That love that we have for each other will always be stronger and more important than anything else. And so I just, I too want to thank Commissioner Wyssong for being willing to read this here on his first day as a Commissioner. And with that, I will pass the microphone over so that he can make his final comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It was a pleasure to be able to read the proclamation for Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Two things that really struck me in the comment that was made about the 365 days of nonviolence. So important that we focus in that on the fact that violence typically doesn't solve anything. But my final thought is that we don't want to be judged on the color of our skin, but the contents of their character. That is so important. It is character that makes a man or a woman. And this just really struck me as something that really becomes, as we grow older, no comment on my gray hair there, Corey, that you do get a different perspective, and character is everything. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Wyssong. And so with that, I think we are ready for a vote, so I will begin with Commissioner Bremer. Aye. Commissioner Wyssong.
Aye.
Commissioner Applegate.
Aye.
Vice Chair Williams.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That passes 5-0, and we're going to take just a brief recess for a photograph, and we will be right back. Okay, I'll call this meeting back to order, and we are on item 13.
Item number 13 is the proclamation recognizing National School Choice Week. Carrie Geithner, Chair, Board of County Commissioners.
Okay, it is my absolute honor to move this proclamation recognizing National School Choice Week. Whereas education is a cornerstone of our nation's prosperity and strength, providing children the tools they need to become informed, responsible, and self-reliant citizens. And whereas National School Choice Week highlights the importance of empowering parents and families to make the best educational decisions for their children, ensuring that every child has access to a learning environment that aligns with their values, aspirations, and unique needs. And whereas the ability to choose from a variety of educational options, such as traditional public schools, public charter schools, private schools, online schools, and homeschooling, affirms the principles of freedom, individuality, and local control that are foundational to our nation. And whereas Colorado's myriad education options have proved essential to help families prepare their children to enter the workforce, pursue higher education, be productive and inform members of society, and contribute to the vibrancy of the community. And whereas, choice in education has been a bipartisan issue in Colorado, championed by governors and legislators of both major political parties. And whereas, despite this near-universal agreement, some want to hinder both the creation, promotion, and authorization of such choices within the state to fulfill a political agenda at the behest of powerful special interest groups. And whereas, National School Choice Week recognizes the hard work of parents, educators, and advocates who dedicate themselves to ensuring that every child, regardless of background or income, has the opportunity to achieve the American dream through quality education. And whereas, school choice ensures the health and vibrancy of the Pike's Peak region and that our workforce will continue to remain competitive for the benefit of our community. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of El Paso County, Colorado hereby recognizes the week of January 26th to February 1st, 2025, as National School Choice Week and encourages all citizens to recognize and support the role of school choice in fostering innovation, accountability, and excellence in education for the benefit of future generations. Done this 14th day of January, 2025, Colorado Springs, Colorado. Signed, the Board of County Commissioners of El Paso County, Carrie Geithner, Chair, Holly Williams, Vice Chair, Corey Applegate, Cammy Bremer, and Bill Wyssong, Members, and attested to by Steve Schleicher, County Clerk and Recorder. Second. Okay, thank you. That's been moved and seconded. We have several speakers. Mr. Schuck? Mr. Shuck.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you very much for that proclamation. Very much appreciated. My late wife and I founded Parents Challenge 25 years ago and we are proud to represent National School Choice Week. We have for several years and in a moment, Deborah Hendricks, who is our Executive Director, will speak to, speak with more specifics. I just simply want to thank you for supporting school choice. It's a pretty simple concept. It simply says, "Parents are the best determinants of what is the best way to educate each child." We have a report card which describes the performance of school districts, not only in El Paso County, but across the state. And one glance at this report card tells you that only about 30 or 40% of the children currently can perform at proficient levels, at grade levels. We wish that school choice weren't required. If in fact, our kids were getting educated as well as they should and as we need them to be, there would be no reason to have school choice. But in the, in the interim period, while the school system gets, begins to perform and meets the needs of parents and the community, we need to provide low-income parents especially access to the education, again, that they think is best for their children. Not every child gets educated the same way. Not every child prospers in the same kind of setting. Why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we want to empower every parent with the ability to choose whatever educational vehicle best educates each of their individual children? So with that, let me turn it over to somebody who knows a lot more than do I and is a lot better qualified to speak in behalf of Parents Challenge. But I want to thank you all. Many of you have practiced school choice yourselves. You're one of the reasons school choice is prospering. And we thank you very much, both as commissioners and as individual parents. So thank you very much. Deborah Hendricks.
Good morning, Commissioners. Deborah Hendricks, Executive Director of Parents Challenge. And just as Steve stated, this organization has, well, worked for the last 25 years in supporting low-income families around their educational choice, whether it be private, public, charter, homeschool, online, microschools. It doesn't matter. It is really the decision of parents. And we're not by any means, we're agnostic regarding the school or the option that parents choose. We just want parents to be in the driving seat. Why? Because one size doesn't fit all. And in our organization, we have many parents who have children in different school settings. So they maybe have one child at a public school. They may have one child, they're homeschooling. They may have one child at a private school. Why? Because it gives the student the ability to get the type of education that is going to help them be successful. And that's really what our goal is, is education, we know, is the civil rights of today, where we want to make sure that everyone has the opportunity to get what's in their best interest. And we want to make sure that parents are in the driving seat to make that happen. So organizationally, we work with families all across El Paso County. We're, we have families in over 25 zip codes. Therefore, we are crossing all boundaries. We have many of the districts that are involved in our program and, or should I say, families that have students in district schools, in charter schools, in private schools. And we have a huge homeschool network. And we're just so excited to showcase that. So on January the 25th is our National School Choice Week School Fair. It will be held at Great Wolf Lodge and we gave you guys flyers for that. We have billboards all across the city. And the whole purpose of that event, again, is to give parents an opportunity so that they can see what options are available. They can connect with schools. They can connect with organizations that provide tutoring services or music programs or dance programs. So it's not just in terms of trying to get someone to switch a school that they're in. That's not our purpose. Our purpose is just to expose all the opportunities that are available and to make sure parents are aware. Grandparents, great-grandparents, because you'll be amazed that not all of our scholars, that's what we call them, are being raised by their parents. They may be being raised by grandparents or great-grandparents. And we want to make sure that they know what, what's, what is available in this community so that they can best make sure that their, their child gets the best education possible. So thank you again for the proclamation. Thank you for, again, making sure that education stays at the forefront of our thoughts because we know that a great education for everyone helps our community overall. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. How are you? Thank you for being here. First off, let me just thank you for giving community members like myself a chance to share our appreciation for your proclamation, your recognition, recognition of this week and also making today's proclamation recognizing the importance of education and our choice. For those of you who I've not met, my name is Rob Molton. I'm the founder and president of the Education Alliance of Colorado. We are a coalition of charter schools and parents that represent more than 32,000 kids, charter school students here in the state, about 25% of our charter school population. And we work together to support and protect educational freedom and choice here in Colorado. Our mission is to do that through public policy that enhances parental choice and preserves the academic, administrative, and philosophical independence of our schools. So part of what makes us different is that we have a genuine focus on educating, informing, and giving calls to action to parents through frequent and relevant information, through our education to them, and related to policy issues that impact them and matter to them the most. Like you and like us, we believe that education is at its best a partnership between schools and families and that it's not a one-size-fits-all endeavor, that parents and caregivers are best equipped to understand the needs of their students and that school choice is an essential ingredient for the long-term success of our students in finding their true purpose and their, and reaching their full potential. Parents should always have and deserve choice in that process and having a voice in that process. Now unfortunately, as you may know, we live in a state where that battle is real. Over the last few years, we've seen and admit, we, we as an organization have seen and amended or defeated or assisted in the defeat of a number of bills that have attacked school autonomy. Those that are limiting the authorization of new schools. We were pivotal in filing an amicus brief with the Supreme Court to defeat that. Restricted schools from choosing their library or classroom materials. Bills that limit school safety. And others related to finance and funding and increased regulation that would defund and close many of our innovative homeschool enrichment programs. Specifically, many of you might remember last, just this last year, House Bill 1363 that is otherwise known as the anti-charter bill and seen, considered by most to be the most hostile bill in our history. So we applied heavy lobbying against that. Myself and our board chair filed a national op-ed explaining the dangers of it. And we enabled tens of thousands of our constituents and parents to reach straight out to the House Education Committee members to express their opinions and share their testimonies. And thankfully, that bill was defeated in the committee. But the sponsors of that bill have promised that they will return this year with another version. So the battle is real. It's far from over. But I'm confident that through proclamations like yours, through efforts of our brave and resolute educators and administrators, and through the effective and expanding voice of our parents, that we will see success in our mission to protect educational freedom and give parents the representation that they deserve here in Colorado. So thank you again for your proclamation, for your partnership, and for your commitment to this cause. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that is here to speak on this? And I, I know Bill Cadman was on my list, but I don't see him here. So I think we are, I think that is all, concludes all of our speakers. So with that, I will bring it up here for comments from Commissioners. Vice Chair Williams.
Yes, as I mentioned earlier, so I have four children and I also have a rambunctious granddaughter. She lives in New Mexico. I was surprised when we went down Roswell, New Mexico's not an incredibly large town. But I went down there and found that we had to choose a place for her to live where the elementary school was the best. And it had been years, years since we had to do that. And so, because when, even when we moved here in 1992, we did choose an area where the public school was the best. But ever since then, you've had such a big blossom of choice. In District 20, you can send your kid to any elementary school. And private schools and charter schools where you can take your tax dollars with you. There are so many opportunities here in Colorado. And we want everyone to see those opportunities. And I'll point out two things. During COVID, a lot of those kids who were at home trying to learn online lost out a little bit in that specific class. And the relationship with, between a teacher and a child is so very important. So I'm going to tell just one quick story. My third child, Lindsay, was born with a deficit, a neurological deficit, and she couldn't speak really until she was seven. We did intensive speech therapy through Head Start, through school, through private doctors. And it was many, many years before she could speak clearly and coherently. And so one year, we had all four of our kids in elementary schools in four different elementary schools. It was quite the balancing act to make sure we had a parent every day to get them home. And so this daughter of mine, her name is Lindsay. She now works for a program. And the other thing I would say wishing on school choice was there was a way that we could make college more affordable. For those who do want to go to college, who want to get associate or bachelor degrees. She works for a program called Brigham Young University's Pathways Online, where church members of the Church of Jesus Christ of, of Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints throughout the world, Nigeria, South America, or some of the biggest growing areas, can go to college and get their associate's degree. They can come out and, with an accounting degree, and produce income for themselves and have a job and be able to move forward in life. And this is done at a very, very low cost to members of our church. She's the Director of Career Development at this organization. And she's coming this week. I'm so excited to have her visit us. But she does get to travel the world and she spends a lot of time. One of the most interesting jobs she says that is currently available is people who will speak in foreign languages, being able to read stuff for artificial intelligence companies. So that when you're doing a search online, whatever language you're searching in will come up with the answer in artificial intelligence. So I found that really interesting. But my concluding remark is really just to say that school choice has really, really benefited my family throughout the years. And I am so thankful to have lived in this state where I have had the opportunity, thanks to Stephen Joyce Shuck and to Deborah Hendricks and to Mr. Molton and to wonderful state representatives who saw a future where if you made education a little bit more competitive, you would have a better chance for kids to learn. And I think that that's the key is the economic competitiveness brings in a greater chance to learn for our children. And I hope we can continue to pursue that. All of my kids are educated through the public school system. I would love to see the public school system succeed. But the public school system can't handle every child, especially those with special needs. And I'm really thankful that we have charter schools that are able to handle that. Thank you.
I'll jump right in here. Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I, I love that these two proclamations have ended up on the same day because there is a lot of, lot of commonality. At, at the end of the day, both of the, both the legacy of Dr. King and the need for school choice and empowerment of the parents to make those choices. It's about seeing the individual. It's about, I think Ms. Hendricks said, this is not, education is not a one-size-fits-all. But it's all about seeing the human on the other end. Both of these proclamations today. And I just want to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Shuck actually for creating decades ago, as was mentioned, in Colorado, an environment where competition steps everybody's game up. And the parents' ability to choose then, what is the best fit for their parents is kind of the downstream of that. And that, and the downstream of that is impacting an individual life and seeing that person and respecting them as an individual. I just think it's a beautiful, beautiful thing that both of these proclamations were here today. I, I believe, maybe Commissioner Geitner is going to reference this as well. But I believe you have at least two charter school board members up on this board as well. And it has been a great honor to help steward, steward an organization that is offering choice to, to an audience that often doesn't feel like they have a choice. My, my child goes to a foreign language immersion program. And, and for many who come into our community, perhaps that's their only option to educate their kids at the beginning until, until there is a foreign language or until there's an English background there. And for, for the students and the parents that choose to send their students to, to that school, it becomes an opportunity for something else we've talked about today, which is economic empowerment and the ability of those families to, to take responsibility and, and be in charge of, of the future generation's destiny that is currently in their charge. So those are, that's a whole lot of words. And oftentimes, the things that you're most passionate about are the ones that are hard to pinpoint the exact words to. But super excited to do this proclamation yet again today. And you'll probably see me at the school fair. I know you will see our charter school there. But excited that there are lots of options and that it's not about taking, taking students from one school to another. It is about the parents having a choice, finding the size that does fit their child just as if they were fitting their snow boots and, and empowering the families to make those choices. And again, all the way back to the seeing and respecting the individual and still doing our duty to educate them. And, and hopefully for, for great good for our entire community. Thank you.
Commissioner Weisong.
I agree that the state has overstepped its, its boundaries. One size doesn't fit all. The old saying of trying to put a square peg in a round hole doesn't necessarily have the, the best outcome. And I'm probably one of those. My mom used to kind of kid that she really felt sorry for my teachers. And my wife is a retired teacher. And we do have some discussions going back to the, the last proclamation about not always agreeing. But at the same time, it really is important that we find an education system that best fits the student. Thank you.
Commissioner Applegate.
Thank you. I think we really are truly blessed in this country to know that we, we have, we have school choice. And that's a great thing, you know, whether parents want to send their kids to charter school, whether they want to use the public education system. I was homeschooled K through 8. I was blessed enough in my life. I had a mother that wanted to take care of my education when I was in grade school and knew that, you know, I was able to learn that way and have more of the one-on-one interactions. And because of that, you know, it's, it's just a blessing to me, you know, and that I know that I was able to achieve the things I achieve in my life because I had that education. And yeah, I mean, to reiterate, you know, yeah, you're right. There isn't a one. And yeah, I mean, to reiterate, you know, yeah, you're right, there isn't a one-size-fits-all solution. It's, you know, it's up to these districts how they want to choose and these charter schools to choose their curriculum and how they want to educate, how we want to educate our children, so.
And I'll just close off a little bit. Obviously, I am very passionate about education. I don't talk about it a whole lot, but I spent some time as a classroom teacher, actually. Taught English, my, my degree is in, in English and creative writing and spent some time as a very, very young high school teacher where I'd often get asked for my pass in the hallway because it was a large school. And it really taught me a whole lot. First of all, teachers have a really tough job, a really tough job. And I have so much respect for the work that they do in our community. And I think it gets harder every day with the social media and the devices and all of the things that I know that as parents we often struggle with. And so I have, I have a great deal of respect for our teachers, but I also have a great deal of respect for those who step forward and become school board members. It is also a very difficult job and almost always volunteer, whether at the district level, at a charter school level. And it is not for the faint of heart to run a school. There are a lot of opinions, there are all kinds of obstacles that you come into contact with. And so I, I just want to say thank you to everyone who sticks it out and puts in the work, what can at different times be many, many hours, to ensure that our kids have the ability to go to great schools and have those choices. I know, I served on the District Accountability Board in D-49, which is my school district years back. It's how I ended up getting involved and deciding to help found a charter school in that district. And at the time, I was a community member. The state law requires that there's a community member that serves on the District Accountability Board that has no children in the school system. That's not often an easy role to fill because those who tend to be the most interested are those who have kids in their schools. And I was a homeschool parent at the time, still am. And, but I really, I really wanted to participate in that. And then when I started my charter school shortly after that, people would ask me all the time, why are you doing this? Your kids don't go here. Why would you put the time and effort into doing this? And, and the answer is simple. It's not just about my kids, it's about our entire community. And when you start to realize that there are a whole lot of people that care about the entire community and making sure that there are choices for their kids, it's not just about our school or our one thing. We really want to see value for everyone. I think that that is, is something that really, really demonstrates how incredible this community is as well, how many people want to participate in making sure that those, those options exist. I always like to mention that charter schools are public schools. Sometimes we hear people say, you know, public school or charter school, and they are public schools. So if you were not aware of that, they are publicly funded schools and they are available tuition-free to everyone. And so that is a choice that everyone has. I tend to refer to the other schools that are run by our district as district-run public schools. And that's really important because over and over again, I still talk to people who say, I'd like my kid to go to a different school, but I don't have the money to send them to a charter school. And those are, those are paid for by taxpayers and therefore available to all students. I also want to thank Steve Shuck and Parents Challenge. Thank you, Deborah. Thank you all for being here. Thank you, Rob, for being here as well. But in particular, I know Mr. Shuck has been a huge force in our community for schools and not just a single school, but every school, for every parent. And I agree that having these two proclamations today just seems like the right thing. When we talk about economic empowerment, there is nothing more important, I think, than supporting school choice and the ability for parents to, to help their children achieve what is a great education so that they can go on to be empowered for the entire rest of their life. So thank you so much. You've had such an impact and continue to have a huge impact for good for all the different areas of education in our community. And I'm, I'm so honored to call you a friend and, and be able to see the changes that are happening in our community as a result. So thank you for that. And then I will just wrap this up here with saying, I appreciate Commissioner Williams' comments around higher education and maybe one day we can get the cost of that down. I'm the first person in my family to go to college and still the only today. And I'm proud of that. And yet I also am very proud of the careers that many of my family members had, career and technical. There's, there are great opportunities out there. Maybe not everyone wants to go down that college career path and hopefully our schools are doing a good job of that as well. I know many of them are working very hard on those career technical programs. But I do want to say, I was very excited to hear our, very shortly again, President Trump talking about the potential for creating a university system that would be either very low cost or would be funded by taxpayers, that would be online and would give, really open up the, the idea of be able to achieve that degree. I think there are very innovative people in this field. I know Jordan Peterson is one of those. He has created something called Peterson Academy, has some of the top experts in their field and they record lectures. I mean, we have so much technology. I used to go and sit in a big auditorium, actually much bigger than this, the University of Central Florida and hear long lectures and why can't we put those online for everybody and create a lower cost? So there's a lot of innovation in this space. I look forward to seeing, in particular, what President Trump will do with this, Elon Musk. We have so many great thinkers that are using AI. They're coming up with great ways for us to break some of these barriers and create success, opportunity and prosperity for everyone. And I am really looking forward to that and that hopefully becomes a whole new realm of school choice on the higher education level. So with that, I will just double check, make sure we don't have any additional comments or do-overs, as we like to say here. Okay, I will call the roll. Commissioner Bremer.
Aye.
Commissioner Weisong.
Aye.
Commissioner Applegate.
Aye.
Vice Chair Williams.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That passes 5-0, we'll take a brief recess for a photograph. I'll call this meeting back to order and we are on item 14.
Item number 14 is comments by elected officials and Commissioner Liaison Reports, 14A, 2024 November General Election and House District 16 Recount Summary Presentation. Steve Schlecker, clerk and recorder.
Good morning, Commissioner Steve Schlecker, El Paso County Clerk and Recorder. Happy New Year and congratulations to you all that have been elected, re-elected and also appointed to new jobs and duties here in El Paso County. So the reason why we are a little bit late in giving an update in regards to the 2024 general election is we had a recount as well. So I wanted to sit there and just provide a little update as far as what happened here in El Paso County. So, real quick, Angie and I, so Commissioner Applegate and Commissioner Weisong, over here is Angie Leath. She is my Elections Division Manager. And right over there, just to introduce you, is Kristi Riddlin, who is my Deputy Clerk. So I will tell you is I am absolutely blessed with the crew that I have in the Clerk and Recorder's office. They do an amazing job and you will see just by a quick summation of the general election and the recount, how great of a job that they do each and every election. So I really just want to go and do a quick election overview with you, go into the House District 16 election details, the recount process, the recount results, the security and integrity that we placed here in El Paso County. And I was absolutely humbled and honored that the Board of County Commissioners stood by our side to ensure a fair and safe election. The challenges and lessons learned and recognition and acknowledgements because it took an all-hands effort to pull off such a successful general election. So total registered voters in El Paso County as of our election day was 503,314 registered active voters. Just to share with you, when we started beginning to work on the general election going into it, as we were working on the March 5th Presidential Primary, the June Primary, is we had about 450,000 registered voters. So we went up over 50,000 registered voters leading into the general election. The voter turnout for the 2024 general election here in El Paso County was 77.04%. I shared with you, I was predicting a 90% turnout. Angie was in the mid 80s and my deputy was in the mid 80s. So we were sitting here trying to figure out what was going on there and talking to voters, sitting down with my staff, what it really came down to was the length of the ballot. A lot of voters had ballot fatigue, it was the length of the ballot and a lot of, a number of initiatives and amendments that just confused a lot of the voters. And that is where we feel where a lot of voters chose not to participate in the election. So overview of key election outcomes, the presidential election here in El Paso County, the Republican candidate received 53.55% of the vote while the Democratic candidate secured 43.75%. House District 16, the initial vote count indicated a very close race. There was a number of races in the November election that we were keeping our finger on the pulse and watching, which was House District 16 as well. And so as many of you know, this led to an automatic recount as mandated by state election laws, which it fell between the 0.5% and going to a recount. Voters approved ballot issue 2C, extending the sales tax for road improvements with 73.5% voting yes and 26.43% voting no. Additionally, battle question 300, allowing retail marijuana establishments passed with 54.68% in favor and 44.32% against. So taking a look at the election overview is what I went ahead and did is pulled 2016 general election, 2020 general election and our 2024. And as you could see, is when we have total active voters and ballot casts, is our population has, is and has surged. So when we have a population that's moving in here to El Paso County, that also increases a number of things, which is number of registered voters and also motor vehicles. a number of things, which is number of registered voters and also motor vehicles and things like that. But as you could see is, we most certainly went up quite a bit from 2020 and we were right on par with the number of ballots cast for the 2024 election. So, a record 387,751 ballots were cast and I will share with you, I am really, really happy with Mother Nature because an hour after ballots closed, the snow started coming down and it was non-stop for three days. And I know we sat there and we had a number of calls, weather calls, but we had an election to process. So, I will sit there and share a lot of thanks here at the end of this presentation. So, 77.04% general election turnout, but when you look at a party turnout is 82.31% of total registered Democrats turned out, 86.8% of registered Republicans turned out, 69.8% of unaffiliated, which today, they take up 51% of all of our total registered. So, 69.8% of our unaffiliated voters turned out. And then our other minor parties was 64.88% that turned out.
Mr. Schlecker, could I just ask you a question on that last slide? I think it's interesting that you do have a lower percentage of unaffiliated voters that are turning out, but not surprising if you are following the fact that we have automatic voter registration that is mostly, you know, registering folks as unaffiliated. And I found it very interesting, a little bit of a personal anecdote here, that my son, who's not 18 yet, did go and get his learner's permit from the DMV and was pre-registered through that. But I thought it was very interesting, they never mentioned it to him, they never asked him if he wanted to be pre-registered, they never asked him what he would like to be registered as, but they went ahead and they registered him as an unaffiliated voter. Of course, we got something in the mail, which is the procedure now to ask if he wanted to affiliate with a party, but I was very disturbed by the fact that my husband went with him and he was never even talked to about this. So, what is the standard practice around this, understanding we have automatic registration, but are we truly not even engaging in a conversation with individuals? Because certainly that's going to drive down our voter percentage. Obviously, if you make the choice to register to vote, you have some interest in voting, but if we're just registering people who truly do not have an interest to vote, we're obviously going to continue to see, I think, a decline in voter participation.
Absolutely, and Commissioner, you bring up some very good points, one of which is, I testified against the bill last year that allows 15-year-olds to be registered. And so, what they wanted to do is, that was part of the automatic voter registration process where a young adult can go and get their permit. And the reason why I testified against that is, one of which is at 15 years old, we've all been there, we've all, you know, we all have children, is at that time for them to select a party or anything like that, they have no idea at that time if they want to be of a major party, a minor party, or just not even be affiliated. The other thing is, is when you start putting bad data in, because these are individuals that cannot vote, and I am a strong believer, is if you put bad data in, bad data comes out. And so, when you start mixing databases and things with, you know, active voters with folks that cannot vote for three more years, there is the potential of, you know, databases and we have seen here in the state of Colorado where voter registration cards are sent to individuals who are not even a US citizen. So, these are things that I'm very, very concerned about, is we are just basically putting bad data in. Now, to also, you know, answer your question in regards to educating individuals that are going down to the Department of Revenue, because my office, we do renewals, we do not issue the first licensure or IDs that's done through the state and they do not, they do not educate individuals. But to me, what I think should happen is when an individual goes down there and they sit there and go to get their license and they become registered, they then should become inactive. And then the clerk and recorder of that county mails that individual, reaches out to that individual and say, you know what, let's go ahead and do you want to be a part of a major party, a minor party? And at that time, that individual should be able to sit there and identify the affiliation they want. Right now, Madam Chair, I feel the government is picking the affiliation, which I feel is completely wrong. So, those are things that I actually has been talking to Angie about, is the government should not be picking our affiliation. When they go and they get their license, they should be placed on the voter rolls as inactive. We reach out to them and they become an active voter, once they, you know, reach back out to us going, I want to be a Democrat, a Republican, a Libertarian, or part of the Forward Party. But those are things that I feel that we should be working on over the next couple legislative sessions.
I really appreciate that, just from that perspective, because you hear all the time, you've got politicians out there saying, everybody's an unaffiliated, nobody wants to be affiliated with a party. Well, they force their hand in many of these cases and I've talked to people over and over again who've said, oh, I was supposed to get something in the mail, they didn't even realize, you know, we all get a ton of mail, we get junk mail, we get all of these things and they didn't even realize how they were supposed to go about the process. So, I thank you for looking into that and continuing to try and work with our legislators on that. It is just a case that I think the automatic voter registration in Colorado was a huge mistake and creates a whole lot of expense and confusion for voters as well. And if you don't want to vote, that is certainly, you're right as well. So, thank you for that and I think Vice Chair.
Yeah, I have a comment around signature verification. Now, it's my understanding in House 16, this was where there were a lot of problems is because when you go in to get your driver's license, do you sign with your finger on a notepad or do you actually sign with a pen?
It signed with a pen.
Okay, because I understood, now this is a misunderstanding probably on my part, that some people had signed their driver's license different than they signed on their ballot application. And that was where the problems were coming in. I just would ask you, as the state legislature comes up this year and next year, let's see, you know, if we could resolve those issues as to how we can make sure we have somewhat of an accurate signature. I mean, people change their signatures, but I know that what I sign on a little, and I know you said, we don't sign on the electric pads, but when I sign on an electric pad, it does not look like my real signature. So, I think that's something important we'll have to watch for in the future.
Yeah, I absolutely agree, Commissioner. And one of the things, just signature verification has come a long ways over the years, in fact, over the past several years, we have actually implemented, and it was the Clerks Association doing this, working with all of our directors and elections, is we now have an audit process for signature verification, where we pull a percentage of the signatures each and every day during an active election. And so, we pull that information, in addition to that, is we pull reports on our, you know, bipartisan judges of, which judges are basically, you know, saying, these are good signatures, bad signatures, so you want to look at that data as well. So, we compare that each and every day, but we now also have an audit process on the signature verification process. So, moving on is when we sit there and take a look at the ballot return method, as always, 91% chose to use the ballot drop box and 9% did in-person VSPCs. Although I was way off in my estimate as far as 90% voter turnout, is Angie, Kristy and I hit the nail on the head when it came to in-person voting. And I shared with you, we're going to see about 35,000, you know, voters showing up in person and you probably saw the pictures where we had 400 voters standing in line at our VSPCs and believe it or not, we were just a bit over 35,000. So, if I take anything away from that election, that's the one that we got pretty dang close. So, looking at each and every one of the counties, is the county turnout at 76.99% where we are at right there compared to the state as a total. El Paso County was 49 out of 64. You see the top 15, a lot of our rural counties really, really showed up in force, where you're looking at an 89% turnout. As you see here, what's in common is a lot of the metro counties were right there, right about 70% in regards to that. And I think that goes back to what Madam Chair has shared, is the unaffiliated. Now, I'm going to turn this over to Angie because I know with our two new Commissioners, Commissioner Weisong and Commissioner Applegate, is we're going to get into the mail ballot reconciliation report and this actually is a report that we share at Canvas when we certify the election.
Good morning. So, on this chart here, you're going to see up at the top where it says prepared, those were voters that registered to vote or did an address change within seven days of the election. So, by law, we can't mail them a ballot, we just let them know they have to vote in person. So, we had just over 4,000 people that the ballots were in prepared stage, but we never mailed to them. We had 131,491 people that we sent a ballot to that did not return it. So, those are the voters that did not participate this election, whether they didn't return it or vote in person. We had 352,974 accepted mail ballots. Again, this is just mail ballots, this doesn't include our in-persons. And then if you go down through the list here, those are rejected codes and how many we had. The most important ones are rejected voted more than one ballot, that means that they attempted to vote twice. So, those 83 cases will be turned over to the District Attorney's Office for further investigation. And that's whether they voted twice in our county or voted more than once, or attempted to vote more than once in separate counties. We had one voter that voted that we did not count his ballot because he was listed as a convicted felon. You're going to see two people that we did not count their ballot because voter deceased. This does not necessarily mean that the dead voter voted their ballot. It means we received their ballot back and on that envelope, it could have said voter deceased, but we cannot open that envelope to see if that ballot is counted or not, but since it was received in our office, we have to track it. So, we have to put it into a reject code, voter deceased. If there was a signature on that ballot where it looks like there was an attempt abroad, those would be turned over to the DA's office for investigation as well. Three people voted the wrong ballot, which means they probably turned in their presidential primary ballot in their envelope or their June primary, or one from last year, or one from another county. Five people put two ballots in one envelope, which is usually a husband-wife situation where they're trying to save a stamp, save an envelope, they lost their envelope. We cannot verify those, so five, those five were rejected. 16 people did not, they were rejected, verification affidavit not complete. Every mail ballot has a self-affirmation on there that, yes, I am this person, I'm 18 years old and so forth, but we had those people return it in an envelope that did not have that affirmation. So, most likely, they lost the envelope we provided to them, they stuck it in their own envelope. We mailed them a letter saying, you need to fill out this affirmation for us to move forward with it. So, we had 16 people do that, 69 people just sent us an empty envelope. 147 people were required to show us ID because it was their first time voting by mail and we did not have confirmation of ID on file. They did not return ID, we reached out to them, they did not provide it to us within the eight days after the election. 149 people returned their ballot envelope with no signature, even though we say in five to seven places sign here. 147 people did not sign, I'm sorry, 149 did not sign. 374 ballots were returned to us after 7:00 PM, whether that was through the post office. We have them, you know, the ballot boxes closed at 7 o'clock, we go out the next day to do a full sweep of everything and you'll, we'll find ballots like stuffed accordion style and, you know, the side of the box, trying to get it in. So, we had a few of those. And then we had 4,468 ballots that were rejected due to signature discrepancies. All of those were reached out by email, if we had an email on file or by mail. And they have up until eight days after the election to provide us a form saying, yes, I did vote this ballot or no, I did not. They need to sign it and provide us a copy of their identification. Those 4,468 people did not follow the process within the eight days, so those are turned over to the DA's investigators as well for follow-up. And then our undeliverables, you're going to see three numbers there. The true undeliverable number was 9,900, I'm sorry, 9,798. That 7,462, the voids there, those were people that we mailed a ballot to and they came back undeliverable, but within the election cycle, they updated their address with us. And so, they just forgot to let us know, we did not get notification or whatever, but 9,798 people were true undeliverables and were made inactive after the election.
So, looking at the VSP, VSPC reconciliation report, is we had 38 VSPCs, as you all know, and the grand total is we had 35,443 in-person voters. So, we were off by about 400 voters, but I thought we came in pretty good on that one. But as you could probably see, the four busiest VSPCs are our DMV branches. And the reason I feel that is the reason why is because they're more noticeable, everybody knows where they're at. The Citizen Service Center was absolutely busy a week leading up to the election, where I had to make a decision because there were so many people coming in there, as I had to close down motor vehicles on Monday and Tuesday because there was just absolutely no room in that hallway once ever. Our UTC branch, as you can see, there was 2,747, Fort Carson, East Library, which is always a popular site, and also our powers. Fort Carson was absolutely, the commanders out there, they were bussing soldiers in by units and fountain. Commissioner Applegate, you probably saw it as well, is it was, we probably had about 300 soldiers standing in line. What I would like to say is to our voters, thank you. At no time did anybody complain, have anything bad to say, many of which were proud to be, you know, participate in the process. And what I also found interesting is many of the voters actually had their mail ballot tucked in under their arm, but they wanted to basically participate in the presidential election the old-fashioned way and they wanted to take their ballot, sit in the booth and have their kids next to them and watch the process and teach them how it was done. But like I said, it was, we brought folks in from the snow, folks that were in, you know, kids and things like that, but no one ever complained. So, it was an amazing, an amazing turnout. So, talking about undeliverable ballots, El Paso County has seen a 406% decrease in undeliverable ballots from the 2022 general election versus the 2024 general election. So, as you can see, and the things that we have done and, you know, and I'm so grateful that you guys have partnered up with us in the Elections Department, is there was 49,621 undeliverable ballots in our 2022 general election. This election, keep in mind, more registered voters and we mailed out more ballots is 9,798. We are making significant progress in this and I will probably say, I'm not too sure, but I will pretty dang confident, is we were the number one metro county in the state for undeliverable ballots. So, the things that we are doing, making sure the ballots get to the right people, reaching out to folks and things like that is making some great headway, but we still have some work to do.
Really appreciate from a ballot security perspective that, but I'm also curious in terms of cost, what, do you have a dollar figure on what that is saving us in terms of mailing out those, those additional ballots?
You know, right now, Commissioner, I could sit there and, Angie, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we say $3 per ballot? So, Commissioner, if we take $3 per ballot and the difference between $49,621 to 9,798 is we are most certainly taking care of the taxpayer money on the election. But I could figure that out and email you.
That would be great and do you mostly attribute that to the credit check?
Through experience.
Yeah, through experience, yes. So, I'm assuming our return on that investment there is pretty substantial. So, yeah, if you could email those numbers, I think that would be really interesting.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner. So, House District 16, so, once we wrapped up the election, we got another gift that we were going to have to sit there and do a mandatory recount. And one of the things that we were looking at, and just to share with you, is a recount has to be done within a statutory timeframe. And when you're looking at 387,000 ballots cast, which we were number one in the state as far as the number of ballots cast, so it's usually El Paso or Jefferson County, but since November of 2023, El Paso has always been in first and we've been beating Jefferson County handily since then. So, approximately 41,279 votes were cast in House District 16 during the November 2024 general election. The Secretary of State issued an order and basically said it's within a half percent and we are going to have to do a mandatory recount. Sitting down with my team, we made the decision that we were not going through all 387,000 ballots and handpicking 41,279 ballots. We did a complete recount of the entire election. So, we did every single ballot over. So we did every single ballot over. And the reason why we did that, and Angie was absolutely right, is you don't want to be in a situation where you sitting there going, we're two ballots short. Where are they at? What's going on? So to me, to do a recount, we did a complete recount. So the initial vote count is the Republican candidate received 20,640, uh, 41 votes, where she was at 50.01%. The Democratic candidate received 20,635 votes at 49.99%. So the initial count showed a margin of six votes between these two candidates. So as I just shared, under Colorado law, a recount is automatically triggered when the margin of victory is 0.5%. And this was certainly within 0.5%. We were watching this race plus several others throughout the whole entire election. And once we wrapped up, we're like, all right, guys, we're going to have to, we're going to get an order that's going to be coming down. So the narrow margin in this race met the threshold for an automatic recount. It was the most, the most narrowest race in Colorado. And I believe right now it actually set a record for the, the closest race. So the recount process ensures the accuracy of the election results. So with that being said, is we had to make a decision as we worked through Thanksgiving week because we had to have the recount done the following week by Friday for the Secretary of State to certify and also the governor to sign off on the election. I am so dang happy is none of our judges said no and none of my staff said no during the Thanksgiving week. So we were in there recounting, doing a lot of things, but it absolutely was a smooth process. We had a lot of watchers, a lot of attorneys, of course. But the timeline of the recount, day one, we kicked it off. We did the House District 16 logic and accuracy test because we're going into a new election and we're retesting all of the equipment. And of course we passed 100%. Day two through day seven, November 27th through December 4th, we did the recount. The, uh, day eight, which was December 5th, we did the House District 16 canvas, which included myself, a Republican representative and a Democratic representative. And then day nine, which was December 6th, House District 16 recount was certified by the Secretary of State. As I mentioned, we recounted all 387,000 ballots, which were retabulated by bipartisan judges under the watchful eyes of very numerous watchers provided by the state parties, our local parties, and also many attorneys that were from Denver or local attorneys representing the candidates or the, uh, or the parties. So basically specific ballots requiring further review were manually counted to resolve discrepancy by the bipartisan canvas board. So what that meant is we were going into the recount. The day of canvas is my division manager, Angie, and the Secretary of State attorney walked into my office and said, Steve, we have a virtual tie. By Colorado law, if there is a tie, how you do it is both candidates' names go on a hat whose names pulled out is the winner. That is not a very good feeling. But however, what we did is we had very good, uh, a Republican representative, a very good Democratic representative and also myself. And then Angie ran the canvas board. We started off with six vote difference going into the recount. And so taking a look at that is we basically matched the adjudicated ballots that we did for the general election against the adjudicated ballots that we did for the recount. So with that being said, is the canvas board asked Angie to provide the actual copies and the original ballots, which we did. Three of those votes that were cast for the candidate Steph V. Hill were given to her, basically based on voter intent. Then there was another three votes that basically were taken away because what happened is the voter colored in the bubble for the Democratic candidate then crossed out her name. So in accordance with voter intent, in accordance with Secretary of State rules, is if a voter intent, if you cross out that, as it shows in the instructions, is they want to go ahead and remove that vote. There was three ballots that plainly they colored in the candidate and they crossed out her name. So those were where the three votes came from. And it was a unanimous vote where myself, the Republican and the Democratic candidate agreed 100% that those votes should be removed. So Rebecca Kelty, um, at the end of canvas, the final was 20,641 votes, so 50%. Steph V. Hill, 20,638 votes at 49.9. So the margin of victory was three votes. And of course we shared those images of those ballots with everybody that was in the canvas and things like that. So the initial voter count, as I stated, the initial margin was six votes, but the Democratic candidate picked up, um, three votes during the recount. So V. Hill gained three additional votes during this recount. Kelty's vote total remained unchanged and the final margin was three votes, which I think we set a Colorado record for the closest election in Colorado history. So the security measures, uh, going into election and security integrity is during this election, as you guys know, we had 24/7 surveillance of all ballot drop boxes. This is becoming a very, um, hot project within the state of Colorado. And we were the first in the state of Colorado to do this. There are other metro counties that have jumped on. They pulled HAVA grant monies and they're going through this, piggybacking off our contract and doing the same thing as far as, um, live streaming the ballot drop boxes to their voters. Bipartisan teams for ballot collection and handling. Because if you remember, we installed three additional ballot boxes in areas where we felt we needed, uh, more coverage. Secure chain of custody for all ballots, including during the recount process and use state certified equipment and routine logic and accuracy testing. Stakeholder coordination. The Secretary of State oversaw the compliance with state and federal election laws, local election officials, law enforcement, observers. But Commissioners, I just want to sit there and say, because I know you've got a pretty big agenda, is the most important thing about this is that this was a very successful general election. This was a very successful recount. But I want to recognize and acknowledge everybody that was involved in this. If it's from the 800 election judges that stood up and participated and helped us out, but every county and city entity that also jumped up. Facilities was out there till 3:00 in the morning shoveling snow, making sure our judges got, got out safe. Security, the sheriff's office, the Office of Emergency Management. Believe it or not, every elected office reached out to me from the assessor, treasurer, sheriff's office. Everybody's like, Steve, how can we help? DHS, um, everybody at CSC. It was all hands on deck. And I will tell you, Angie and I are absolutely humbled and we both walked away going, this was probably, this was my first general election. So going into it, I really did not know what to expect. But guys, I now know when it comes to UACVA, I would come into about 50, 100 emails from soldiers, sailors, Marines wanting to get, basically, you know, registered to vote is holy crud. This is a real, you know, takes us quite a bit of time. But with that being said, is first and foremost, thank you. We did a lot of things over the last two years to get where we were, to have a successful election. If it was ballot boxes, Experian working on the voter rolls, the changing of the Dominion voting machines to where they cannot hook to the internet. Just a number of changes that we have done here in El Paso County is I will also like to share with you is Angie and I are pretty proud. We got a phone call last week is a group who basically represents the largest municipalities of election officials in the nation. First asked why we were not part of this group and asked Angie and I to fly out to San Diego to be guest speakers of what we're doing here in El Paso County. So we are flying out on February 11th, coming back on the 13th to be the guest speakers and talk about the things that the Board of County Commissioners and the Clerk and Recorder's Office has done here in El Paso County as far as transparency and security of our local elections. So thank you.
Thank you so much for sharing that with us and for the presentation. Are there questions for Clerk Schleger? Okay. Thank you so much for the update.
Congratulations.
Okay. Do we have any other countywide elected officials in the room? I don't see anyone and anybody online. Okay. With that, we will bring it up here to the dais and we will begin with Commissioner Bremer.
Thank you. I will too, will have to get used to this order over here. I, you've heard enough from me today, but I did want to express my, um, condolences, compassion to all of those in California who have experienced quite the disruption to daily life. And, um, my hearts and prayers are with all of those. And hoping that, um, you know, from a, from a public policy side, I'll just jump right into it, that, uh, there are some fixes that can be done with everything from, um, insurance industry to, to building code requirements, to, um, onerous things that make it difficult for people to attempt to rebuild their lives there. So, um, heartfelt, um, just my heart is heavy still. As the state of California continues to burn, um, I am very, very grateful that, uh, we've taken great care here in El Paso County. And, um, to ensure that, uh, our citizens have, um, they have, have choices, they have property rights. And we do our best to ensure that the regulations that are there are there for health and safety, but allow people to make their own decisions and, um, not be overly onerous. So grateful that we've created that type of environment here. But my heart is in, uh, my heart is in with, is with many in California this week. Thank you. Oh, actually, sorry. When, is it a redo if I don't even really finish? I had the opportunity to, um, tour Liberty High School's Continuing Technical Education Center last week. And it's, it's quite impressive what is happening. I maybe should have mentioned this during the school choice. But it, um, I'm, I'm blown away by the students, by the instructors, by the amount of thought, um, that has gone into ensuring that each child can get educated in the way that works for them. The industry support of those programs is impressive. And by the way, the next time you need your tires rotated, your, uh, your oil changed, I would encourage you to, uh, to put your car in the trust of, um, under some great tutelage, the students at Liberty High School, um, who have their own garage shop. There's also a wood shop, a carpentry shop, um, a, a design, um, architecture component to that. What those students are learning is, is going to ensure that our workforce is prepared. And I'm encouraged by seeing these students learn, uh, be, be inspired and, and learn in a way that works for them and graduate from high school with, with jobs that are contributing to this community. So, thank you.
Commissioner Weisong.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Blake. Being that this is the, the first Board of Commissioners meeting, I just wanted to thank both the, um, the Board of Commissioners, where I had an opportunity to meet with all of them. And they were just so open, welcoming, um, as far as even before the, the, the election. And also the, the staff. They have been fabulous since the election as we went through the, uh, onboarding orientation. And I couldn't, couldn't be more pleased with the, the process that, um, that the county has set up to help, uh, get us where we need to be. Excuse me. Um, I've got a couple of, uh, short-term goals. The first one is to be, work with the Pike's Peak Regional Office of Emergency Management. And I'll talk a little bit more about that as we get, um, into, um, some of the additional slides here. The key is, is that we need to look at evacuation management, uh, for the whole county. And I'll explain a little bit of that as we go through this. The second is that I want to meet with all the department heads. If you've been here since this morning, they were up, most of them were all seated there. We got 28 department heads and six affiliated. My goal is to meet with them all and just understand what's going on. This is really going to be looked at from my perspective as a listening tour. I need to know, you know, what they're doing and what do they need from the Board of Commissioners. And in the few short months, I also want to call out, um, I'm just very appreciative of Brett Waters, um, as our county administrator. And what he has done to make, uh, myself feel very welcome, uh, along with, you know, the staff. And the third item is, is, uh, I want to formally meet with the city and in-town mayors and councils in District 3, um, to make sure that, you know, they know, you know, who I am. And again, it's part of the listening tour to make sure that we open those lines of communications. Blake, if you go to slide two. As Commissioner Bremer talked about, you know, we, we've got something that is a little bit unique. This is the Mountain Shadows community, uh, on June 26th, 2012. Is, it looks very similar to what we have been seeing on the TV for the last week in Los Angeles. And kind of a key point here is city, county, state officials, they need to be prepared for low probability, high impact events. And that is really why I'm pushing, uh, for the evacuation planning countywide. Blake, third slide. We need to be very prepared. And I'm looking at it as a strategic plan of action. 2012 Wildo Canyon Fire, two deaths, 347 homes destroyed. Black Forest, two deaths, 500 homes. The Marshall Fire in '21. And some of you may or may not understand the term, but this is what we're now calling a POI, meaning the Prairie Urban Interface. There were no trees, no forest, no woodland, uh, urban interface, uh, for the Marshall Fire. So that means that in theory, El Paso County is a hotbed both with prairie and wildland urban interfaces. 1,000 homes, businesses were destroyed in the Marshall Fire. 2018, the Camp Fire, Paradise, California, 86 deaths, 19,000 homes and businesses destroyed. In '23, in, uh, Lahaina, Maui, 102 deaths, little less than 3,000 homes and businesses destroyed. In 2025, in the LA area, which as you know, is still very active, I heard, I think this morning coming in, that the death count had gone up a little bit. But I'm using this from yesterday, 24 deaths and approximately 12,000 homes and businesses destroyed. The Camp Fire and the Lahaina Fire, many if not most were trapped in their cars while they were trying to evacuate. This is why it's so critical that we look at evacuation planning at a countywide basis. And those of you that saw some of the information, uh, in the video that people were evacuating and then the sheriff came up to them and said, because they were in gridlock, if you want to survive, run, get out of your car and run. Then you ended up having to bring in a dozer, push all the cars out of the way that allowed the ingress of your first responders, emergency vehicles, uh, for fire suppression. So there's a lot that we need to do going forward. I mean, and what, what we were seeing on TV is it's frightening, it's devastating, and it is absolutely terrifying. And having gone through the Wildo Canyon Fire, I live in Mountain Shadows. I know we can do better. And that is, that is, uh, what I feel very strongly about. And we don't have that many here, but lastly, you elected me. I work for you. And I am your public servant. Thank you. Madam Chair.
Commissioner Applegate.
Hello, everyone. My name's Corey Applegate, um, Commissioner from District 4, former Fountain My name's Corey Applegate, Commissioner from District 4, former Fountain City Council and a former Planning Commissioner for the City of Fountain. As Henry David Thoreau said, "The government is best which governs least." And as I move into this role, I intend to keep in my mind, working with my colleagues to fight the big government machine in Denver. I want to thank every voter in District 4 for their confidence in me. If there is a concern or a question, I will certainly do my best to address it. I want to thank you to my team and also to the county staff around me that helped brought me up to speed and all this stuff that surrounded me and advised me. I know you will continue to help me address the needs of my district, and I want to thank my parents who taught me the value of limited government, hard work, and honoring God. As I move through these next four years, I hope to keep these values close to me. Let's get to work, and I look forward to meeting and talking with all of you.
Vice Chair Williams.
Yes. Good morning. Happy to start a new year. Very excited to have Commissioner Weisong and Commissioner Applegate joining us. I know that their training was very well done by our Government Affairs Department, and so we're very excited to put them into a few more things like the Pikes Peak Rural Transportation Authority Training, which can be rather long and interesting, and a few other things, but we're very excited to have them working with us. It, just in the past couple of weeks, last week, I did have several meetings, the Pikes Peak Area Council of Governments, the Pikes Peak RTA, and then we also had the statewide Transportation Advisory Committee. So most of my work was centered around transportation last week, and then we did have a Legislative Committee meeting yesterday for the Pikes Peak Area Council of Governments. So we are closely watching the, the many issues that come down from the state legislature and making sure that any of the unfunded mandates that may come down come definitely with their realization that it would cost us some money, but also that we can keep an eye on those and try to search for common sense solutions at the legislature so that we have good legislation, because that's what makes our state great. I don't have any further meetings this week that I am aware of, but I'm excited to get started on a new year and working on some new, and new and different boards. So thank you very much.
Okay. So since we're doing a bit of Boards and Commission shakeup today, I think we will, we will all have a lot to probably report next week. I do know that I have both library and fair meetings this week, Fair Advisory Board, and so that is on the agenda. I do want to just make some comments about the fires in California. I feel the same way watching and hearing some of those things. In fact, I was listening to a Joe Rogan podcast, for those of you guys who are familiar with that, and listening to Mel Gibson talk about how his house was probably burning while he was sitting and having that conversation with Joe Rogan, which is, is just a really, really kind of an unreal thing to realize that there are still many things that are outside of our control, and sometimes we have to focus on safety and deal with what, what, what happens. But certainly, that is a very sad experience for many that they are losing so much, and yet those obviously who have lost their lives are, that is the most important thing, that's not replaceable. I know several of those folks lost their lives trying to fend off fire from their homes, and I think it's a good reminder that, again, things can be replaced, people can't, and we should always prioritize safety for people first and foremost. But I also want to address a couple of things that I think have to be said, and that is around policy and the way the policy can affect what is happening, particularly in California. Unfortunately, it is no surprise to many of us that California is in a state of lack of fire mitigation, primarily due to folks who thought they were doing good things for the environment, but didn't want to see the kind of cleaning out that must happen in order to maintain appropriate levels of fuels in, in all kinds of areas that can become very detrimental in the case of a fire. And, and these are, you know, fire is natural. Most of us know this. We learned about it in elementary school. It's been a part of the ecosystem of our environment forever. So whether that is a lightning strike or some other type of ignition, of course, we do have man-made ignition as well, but those are things that are going to happen, and we have to do that mitigation work. And I think for a very long time, the lack of mitigation and forest management in California has been a topic of conversation. So I think we can learn a lot from that in terms of paying attention to that mitigation in particular. I also, I also think that as I hear folks starting to talk about rebuild, I think there's another important lesson for us here in Colorado, and that is we're hearing that people have been losing their insurance coverage over the last year, particularly in the last three months, in a lot of these areas because insurance companies become increasingly concerned about the cost of rebuilding. In particular, they knew that the forests were being mismanaged as well. And when you hear people talk about the industry in California, insurance companies are leaving, and we're seeing the same thing happen in Colorado, and there's a wake-up call to be had. It is very difficult, and we have to make many difficult decisions as policymakers, but when we start to force regulation on companies like insurance companies that cause them to not be able to have a viable business model, they will start to leave, and we're seeing that in the state of Colorado already. When we say you can increase premiums, nobody wants their premiums to increase. We want to keep costs as low as possible, but artificially having the government set price controls only creates a situation where those businesses are going to exit the market. And while we want to keep costs low, we have to look for ways that are not artificially imposed. It just doesn't work. It might feel good, some politicians might get some accolades over it, but this is the result of bad policymaking, and I am very concerned for the future of Colorado because we are headed down the same roads. Additionally, at the end of the day, whatever you believe is the purpose or the reasoning behind all of these fires, I think that there's probably lots of debate about this. At the end of the day, we have to be prepared to respond, and when we talk about budgeting and where we spend our money, preparing to respond is the most important thing that we can do when we talk about public safety. I want to point out that it doesn't matter how many electric vehicles the state of California has. I know the Governor of Colorado was very excited to talk about how we had more electric vehicles. That's not going to save you from a forest fire or any type of fire. You can try to come up with every climate goal imaginable. It is not going to change the fact that there are continuing emergencies. And so again, we have to be very thoughtful about where we spend our dollars. They are not infinite. Subsidizing electric vehicles so that we can brag that we're number one is doing very little to help the reality of people who have all kinds of things in front of them, disasters, and disasters have always been the case throughout history. We're never going to get away from that. So again, being prepared and thinking through how we're spending our dollars, not throwing them out the window on pet projects, not throwing them out the window on, quite frankly, a lot of unproven science, those are the things that we need to be, get back to in the state of Colorado if we are going to protect our residents, if we are going to be able to make good decisions, good policy decisions that deal with reality and are not just, again, political talking points that really will do nothing to benefit our residents. I think we have a lot to learn in this area. As I said, we've already seen the industry, the insurance industry, leaving in the state of Colorado, but we're at the beginning, and I still think that we can work to reverse some of these things if the legislature will actually stop being focused on ideology and pandering on issues and actually talk about the realities of what happens in an economy when you make these kind of choices and regulations. So I, I for one, feel very strongly about this, and will look forward to having a lot of these conversations since our legislative session kicked off just last week. I think we have a lot of opportunity to talk about those items and continue to make a difference from the perspective of the county. So with that, I will conclude my comments. We do have a hard time to pause this meeting because there is an additional swearing-in ceremony that is in this room. So we will be taking a break here in just a few minutes. I think we have enough time to get through at least item 15 here, and then we will take a recess to allow for the setup and the swearing-in that is to be taking place here shortly. And actually, I have one more note, which is speaking of Government Affairs and the tremendous job that our Executive Director of Government Affairs did today, I want to wish a very happy birthday to Ryan Parcell. Okay. Onto item 15.
Item number 15 is community service organization reports, and there are none.
Okay. So at this time, we do need to take a pause, take a recess in this meeting so that we can allow for the swearing-in to take place. So this meeting is in recess.